I'd like to call this special meeting of the South Burlington School Board to order. I just want to give a reminder to the folks who are joining us. Thank you for joining us. Each item on the agenda, if there is an administrative presentation, administrators will go first. The board will have some discussion and questions, and then we will make time for questions and comments from the public before moving on to the next agenda item. So we will start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. You may either type your questions, or you may raise your hand. In Zoom, there's a little raise your hand. If you go to the Participants tab in the right-hand corner, you can raise your hand, and we will open up your audio so you can ask a question or make a comment. As you know, written comments or questions on items not on the agenda, and no hands raised at the moment. So I think we can move ahead to item number three on the agenda, which is the COVID-19 update.
So Bridgette, I'll do just a real quick update. Obviously, I think most of our residents are getting pretty regular updates from the governor and his daily briefings. We remain in the same situation. Schools have remained closed. That's our school doors are closed, but we are continuing what we call continuity of learning for the remainder of the year, and we kicked that off today in increased connections with families and student learning opportunities. So that's currently in play, and we'll continue that until such we're told differently. We continue to be providing meals and learning packets to our K-1 students. Again, Transportation and Nutrition Service folks, under direction of Gary Marquess, has been doing, they've been doing an awesome job to do that. So again, that's the update on where we are. Again, we're all trying to do our part to socially distance and comply with all of the requirements here in our schools. And again, custodial folks have been doing a good job for those buildings that are needing to be used for childcare at Rick Marcot to make sure they're ready every day. So again, that's my update.
Great. Any questions from the board with regard to COVID-19?
Yeah, it's Brian Miniere here. David, the question is, I've heard from a couple of community members wondering who are considered essential personnel and who is eligible for hazard pay, and I was wondering if there are any guidelines on that or a plan?
So essential folks are anyone who's currently part of nutrition services, part of transportation, and folks that are helping to make that happen, as well as the childcare folks that are doing that. There's also our pre-K environment. Also, we have some components that we need to, we need to do that as well. So that's where we are. As far as hazard pay, I'm not really sure how that has all come out, but currently we are paying our individuals as they have been in the past. So we're paying their hourly rates for the time in which they're rendering services. The childcare subsidy, we're not actually certainly, Lamb here reported to me this morning that maybe that isn't going to take, that isn't going to be available for school-based childcare. So it sounds like it's an area that I'm going to need to explore and figure out why that is. Again, I have not specifically talked to the secretary or the powers at AOE, but we'll be doing that.
I think part of this question arose because there may be some overlap between these people who are asking in UVM, and there are certain represented staff at UVM who do have in their contract that they're eligible for, I think it's two times and a half, not just time and a half. I don't know all of our relevant contracts well enough to know if there are any such clauses there, but I think that was the basis for the question.
No, that is, that is not the case in our, in our collective bargaining agreements, and so we are trying to be sensitive to the, to the work in which the folks are putting in. But at this point, there's nothing in their contract that, you know, that speaks specifically to hazardous pay. So again, we're treating compensation consistent with the collective bargaining agreements, Brian.
Understood. Yeah, thanks.
David, I had a couple of quick questions just because they've come up recently. One is, obviously, we hope all our staff stay safe and healthy, but how are substitutes handled in the current situation? And then secondarily, I'll just ask them together, though they're unrelated. But with April break coming up, I know we've provided a lot of meals to the community. Is there any plan to continue that service over the April break period?
So let me do both of those. April break, I'll call on Gary in just a second. Substitutes, Elizabeth, can you clarify, like substitutes that come in and support individuals in nutrition service, transportation, or substitutes?
What do we do if, if, you know, one of our teachers is out for some reason?
Yeah, so we are currently working kind of internally within our own system. So either there's a support network that will help out, or a team member from one of the teams that will help out. We don't think that it's overly advantageous to call in a sub for, you know, this continuity of learning mode at this time. Again, obviously, if we were faced with a whole bunch of people being out, we'd have to figure that out. But at the present time, again, teachers are doing a great job making, you know, making everything work and make the connections that they need to. So so far, we haven't had to deal with any major issue around subs.
Thanks. I would assume that'd be the case under the current online learning model. Thanks.
And then, and then regarding April break, again, I put out a memo updating folks that we would be taking April break. Again, wanted to provide clarity that one out last time, and we will be providing meals. And again, I want to let Gary just talk a little bit about what that's going to look like, because we do also want to give nutrition service and transportation people a little bit of a break. But Gary, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, Elizabeth. So there will be communication going out to all families tomorrow. We are going to provide meals for the April vacation. We will not be delivering regularly during the April vacation. We are providing non-perishable bulk items on Wednesday and Thursday of this week. And then Friday, we will provide essentially a week's worth of the perishable items to, to go with that with our regular delivery program. So that should sustain most people through the April break. We are going to have a pickup at the middle school on Wednesday, which will go out in a separate communication. Wednesday of the vacation week, we'll have food available for pickup. And I'll also be running, like, we will also be running an on-demand delivery service for people who need special accommodations or, you know, become food insecure and request some additional food if that happens. So that's our, that's our plan right now.
Thanks, Gary.
Any further board questions on COVID-19?
Yeah, just one more to build on Elizabeth's, I think. So apart from food distribution during break, there have been a couple of parents who have asked me, you know, what does instruction or what is, to be cynical, entertainment look like during break? I assume there's not going to be any official instruction going home, but that all of the sort of library resources, things like that will still be available? Is that fair to say?
That's right, Brian. I mean, we want to make sure, you know, those things are available, good, good things that we normally encourage over a break. You know, obviously, reading and those types of activities are fun, family activities that can be done. We do recognize that, you know, this is, this is a unique period of time. People have been working hard. We know moms and dads and guardians have been working hard too. So our hope is to just push the pause a bit on kind of the the more rigorous kind of work that's been happening and encourage some fun activities that can be done, you know, as a family or as a group. Certainly encouraging the ongoing reading and things of that nature. But there will be nothing going home around the instructional, instructional expectations during that period.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other board questions before we double check on hands raised? I see no hands raised at the moment. RETN has a question asking to be made a panelist. So Steve, I don't know if you can do that.
RETN?
Yeah, I'm looking. I was just looking for her. I don't see her in, oh, Marcy.
Yep, we're adding. Thank you, Marcy.
Okay. All right. So see no other questions or raised hands. I think we can move on to item number four. Consider South Burlington School District budget for FY 2021.
Yep, thank you, Bridgette. What we're gonna, what we're gonna do is, obviously, nothing has changed since our last presentation. So board members, I want to just be clear about that. My idea here would be just to give you the kind of where we were with reductions and where we were and ended up with the regards to the budget workshop sheet, and then where we ended up with the tax rate piece. So those, that's, again, I didn't, wasn't proposing to go back through the whole presentation, wanted to just highlight a couple areas. So we'll do that now. Amy, yeah, so here, here again are the budget reductions that we had. We remember last meeting, board, we reinstated the district's special education clerical positions. That's why you see those zeroed out. And we brought back the district IT staff person so that that had that. We made up those reductions from the A1s and A2s, and so we had some reductions in some assistant football coaches. We had a point two reduction in business and health. We had a reduction in library support position. Still able to do those, but with, with less people. And then the visual and performing arts, and this is specific to art. And so those were the reduction amounts that helped offset those two above. The red line is drawn across as that's where we are currently at. The tax rate is at 5.91, and the overall expenditure is at 3.80. Again, just bringing back, this is exactly the same that was presented at the last board meeting. Moving on to the next, the budget workshop sheet. You know, Amy, there we go. So here again is the budget workshop sheet, and you see the highlighted in yellow at the percent change is the 3.80% expenditure increase and the 5.91% tax rate increase. And then the brown box, you see the result on the $100,000 at $95, 219 additional dollars on the condo, and 319 on the average home. Again, that does not take into account income sensitivity. Budget history, again, same as presented last time, just looking at our five-year averages, five-year and 10-year averages, both on spending and on the tax rate. So 3.27 on the five-year spending and 2.49 on 10-year average, 0.99 five-year tax rate increase, and then 1.93 10-year. So that is where we are currently at. Again, I don't know if there's questions from the board specific to where we are with the budget. Again, this is the same budget that you saw last meeting. I just want to reiterate that. Thank you, Amy.
So are there any questions or comments from the board at this stage? Okay. Seeing none. I am looking, I see no hands raised with regard to attendees. Just double checking Q and A as well. I see no questions, written questions at this stage.
So this, excuse me, Bridgette, sorry. This, this, this was, I, we did warn these for action. Again, not knowing exactly where the board would be on this April 13th, but they are warned for action, the budget. Again, I don't know what the pleasure is of the board at this point in time.
Bridgette?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we had discussed last week was making sure we followed up with council on the information about delaying a budget vote and getting some guidance from the Secretary of State's office and so forth. I think since we've met, the governor has extended the stay in place order to mid-May. I don't know if I'm using the correct language, but can you just clarify the feedback from council on that?
So absolutely. So Elizabeth is on point with that. The stay in place, actually, I don't know that I have the right words now either, but order in place, I think, stay in place, was extended to later May, and therefore, what we've heard for direct guidance with the May 7th date was really one that was not looked upon favorably, and we should be moving that date. And so I did talk with Kevin Dorn, Donna Kinville, and also legal counsel in that what I was thinking more proposing is the May 28th date for a possible revote to the board.
If we want to have any discussion about that, I think that makes sense from my perspective. I don't know if we're sort of weighing in on what we think about a vote date, but May 28th seems to me to make sense, given that we'll still be sheltering in place all the way through May 15th at least. And that would give us more time to prepare. And I think I would also propose that we not approve a budget tonight, because we have another meeting warned already, our regular school board meeting warned for April 29th. Be warned in time to approve a budget if we were moving things to May 28.
Yeah, this is Martin. I agree. I agree that we need to postpone both of those actions, postponing the budget vote till later. We may gather more information, maybe make some progress with our various negotiations. And certainly, we have a little more time, because the vote really can't take place until, at the earliest, the end of May, given the situation. So I agree with that.
A question for David. Did, did you ask about all mail-in voting?
I did. I think it's, it's on the table. We've had no, no direct, you know, affirmative response yet. Again, this is all work that needs to happen between now and, and whatever date you select. If it's that May 28th, we'll need to figure that out. Some of those situations may change, whether it's a 100%, you know, mail, mail-out or mail-in voting, and some small social distancing practices, I'm not sure, but we'll be going to work on that. It's certainly been put out there. I do expect that from the Secretary of State's office, that will be some added direction as well. We know that right now there's 18 school districts that have, do not have a budget approved, nine of which are budgets that did not pass, nine have not yet voted. So we think that we'll get some more specific guidance in the time ahead here.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, that makes perfect sense at this point to leave it open. We may have more information available, and that puts us at the last Thursday of the month with almost a full two weeks after what the most recent shelter in place order is from the governor.
And it's my understanding that would leave enough time. You know, we all hope that this version of the budget will pass. If it does not, and we have to put forward a third budget, just, I guess, for the public information, can you explain what the timeframe would look like to get a third iteration in before the end of the fiscal year?
Yeah, so we did talk to legal counsel about this as well, and the May 28th date, you know, obviously, if it was approved, then we'd be all set. If, if not, then we would have enough time to go back out and rewarren and hold the meeting in June. The notice period changes at seven days versus the 30 or the 15. And so we feel like we could, we could get that in if we needed to.
Okay, we do have some questions now that have arisen since we've had this discussion about the dates. And so as we've sort of become accustomed to, if it's okay with everyone, I'll start with the written ones, and then we'll move to any hands that are raised after that. Annie Loop asks, curious how many attendees are on right now? I'm showing 51 participants right now. Andrew Hamm asks, is there an update on any meetings that have taken place this past week with the unions? And then he has a second question, which is, Alex, are you still heavily advocating for mail-in voting even if the vote is the end of May? So those are two separate questions. I don't know what, what we'd like to provide in terms of a negotiations update. There have been no in-person meetings. There have been some, there have been communications about various different issues over email, but there have been no in-person meetings nor any Zoom meetings to actually continue negotiations. Elizabeth, I don't know if you want to say another word about that at all?
No, at this point, we're, we're still interested in moving forward, and that's been communicated. So we hope to have updates in the future.
And I'll respond to my end of it. I'm, I don't know if I would call it heavily advocating, but I do support the concept of having an all-mail-in vote on this budget. Thank you, Andrew.
And if I could just, if I could just comment on the concept of the all-mail-in or whatnot. I mean, I support whatever the Secretary of State and, and our city clerk come up with, with a safe way to vote, a safe and effective way to vote. And I know this is one of the things they are looking at in the Secretary of State's office. So whatever it takes to have a safe vote on, on whatever the date is that we have the vote, I certainly will be supporting.
Our last written question is actually from Catherine Kilburn, who is later on the agenda. And I believe Catherine, Catherine's question is, I'm on the webinar with the link given. If you would like for me to speak later in the agenda, I think I too will need to be added as a panelist. We can certainly take voice from Kathleen without her being a panelist, because we've done that with other folks, Steve and David. I don't know if we want to have her video up. I'm sure that we probably do need then to add her as a panelist. So I don't know if you guys want to do that or not, or if you were just hoping that she might be opened up to speak for just a minute later in the agenda.
We can, we can do that now if you'd like. Yeah.
And then I will check on participants. Paul Couture, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, Paul. Paul Couture has his hand raised. So Steve, could you make him able to talk from our end? And then Paul, you'll need to unmute yourself from your end as well to speak.
Pat Couture.
Paul.
Paul, excuse me.
Paul Couture.
Yes. Yep, just a second, Paul. Can you go ahead, Paul?
Yeah, Paul, we can't hear you. You need to unmute on your end.
Okay.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right. I just have a, a couple of comments that I, one of them just, I, until a few minutes ago, I was under the impression that the school board was adding to their budget request tax an offset for the CLA. And then I just realized, I just found out that, that what you did this time, and I, is that it's, the, the tax increase is what the, with the calculation will be after the tax increase is approved. The other comment I have is stuff that I read in the other paper that came out on April 9th. One of them was by one of the staff members who said that if the budget was a level-funded budget, that we'd lose 30 teachers. And I've got, gotta say, that kind of threw me back. And I just think that that sounded like a scare tactic to me. And the other comment is, one of the persons that attended your last budget meeting made the comment about it's not fair to guilt the kids in the school system, and I would agree with that. But on the other hand, I also feel that it's not fair, if you will, to shield the children with what's going on in this budget and in this time of crisis, if I, if you will. So thank you.
Thank you. David, I don't know if you want to give just a very brief summary of, we've, we've gone over it a few times in other meetings, but I don't know, for those who haven't attended those meetings, if we want to go over just a few words about why level funding means cuts in terms of number of staff.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Thank you for your comments and questions, Paul.
Oh, sure, Bridgette. I'm happy to do that. When we look at level funding, basically, what we mean is to fall back on the previous year, what the amount was in the previous year. And if we had to do that, what, how would we do that? And it's, it's close to $3 million. And so when you have, primarily, the way in which we run is highly driven by staff. So 80% of our budget is derived from staff. Large portion of it is related to teachers, administrators, and other staff. So when we have to make that size of a reduction, then it does rest on staffing. And so the number that came up to be around the 30 that Paul was alluding to earlier is somewhere in that ballpark. In order to get there, would require about that number of reductions. So that's, that's an accurate statement. However, there's, there's other ways to get there too. And we, we've worked hard just recently to get, to get it down where it is today with, again, reductions that are certainly hurtful, but farther away from students around direct instruction. So I hope that answers the question. And I think as far, one other I might add is, you know, the students, I would be remiss to say, you know, obviously, at the lower elementary, I think kids are going through a variety of, of, you know, some anxiety about not seeing their teachers and not having the normalcy and their connection. So I don't think that our young kids are certainly shielded at all by this. I think specific to budget. Our high school and middle school students, I think, are, are well-read and have been asking a lot of good questions that have come up through, even to the board in some cases, but certainly to the administration on programs that they care for and like. So anyway, that's a, a brief, I think, response to Paul's questions.
Can I just add two more things that might be a little confusing for folks who haven't been on all these calls? When David says a $3 million reduction, I'm looking at now, David, I mean, based on the work that you and the administration have done to bring it down, the 53.7 million that we're talking about right now versus the 51.7 million from last year is really closer to about a $2 million reduction that we would have to make from where we are now. And where we are now already includes some, some staff reductions, admittedly. But it's also important to note that the reason that we're $2 million higher than we were last year with no real change in services, there are a bunch of factors that have gone into that, and we don't need to go through every single one of them, but a big one is changes in healthcare and increases in our healthcare premiums, as well as increases that are really driven by the state healthcare award mean that, that, for the teachers, for example, our healthcare costs are going up almost 17% in next year's budget. And so there, even without changing any services or doing anything differently, there are things like that that are driving up costs. And so if we were to have to level fund, that would mean that we would need to find that money someplace else. And so that would mean reducing staff, because as David said, there aren't a lot of other places to look. There aren't a huge number of supplies or other things. There is some maintenance that's in there, but that maintenance, we've cut back the maintenance in here to really the bare bones that we need to make sure that the buildings aren't damaged, for example, by rainwater in a couple of instances, a couple of roofs that need doing, and some other very critical maintenance things that are in the budget for next year. So there are some things that we simply just can't take out of next year's budget. And so that does lead to then having to cut staff. And so that does lead to then having to cut staff. The other challenge we have is that when you go to cut staff because of seniority requirements and the focus on reducing staff from the less senior ranks, those are typically folks with lower salaries. And so you end up reducing a larger number than you might otherwise think in order to make up that kind of a budget shortfall. So I would assure you that we're not trying to scare anyone. We are simply trying to be transparent about the kinds of cuts that we would need to make if we were in a situation where we needed to completely level fund the budget.
Yeah, Bridget, can I put out an example there? For that, for that last point you, you mentioned, if you, if you were to cut an employee who costs, say, $95,000 with healthcare and, and salary, that person would obviously be a senior teacher and then they would end up bumping one other person at least. And perhaps to cut 95,000, there may have to even be two bumps, you know, to be losing two people in order to make up that difference. And it seems like that's where the number gets to be really high. And that's the way I understand it. Yeah, yeah. And one other, I mean, obviously, I think everyone's alluded to kind of what, what are some of those factors? I was trying to give an overall from where we started, that the reductions that claimed on the 30 staff. One other thing I think that's a component of what we're dealing with, unlike most, is that we have increasing enrollment, right? And so in order to meet the needs, we've got that also at, at the other end, which is far different. So we're trying to staff, you know, a district that is growing while also having some of these financial challenges, as we've mentioned earlier. And again, we, we recognize this is a challenge and this is a very difficult period of time, so.
Yeah, I just checked hands raised as well, and Gary Marcus has his hand up. So if we could make sure that he is unmuted and gets a chance to talk, there we go.
I'm unmuted. No, I just wanted to follow up on that, on that point about the, the FTEs or the teachers, how it was quoted in the other paper, that, that was before the board directed David to make those other cuts. So with the, with the reduction and where we are now, as opposed to where we were, you know, a month ago, you know, that, that number would be far less, but, but still significant.
Thanks, Gary.
Then we just have a question from Gwen Bruins. It says, are there any capital projects being funded by the operating budget for FY '21? If so, could these be shifted to a capital budget and allow for more room in the operating budget to realize some savings?
So I'll let Gary also talk on this one, but I think important to note, as the board and many of the community members have heard, is we have been one of, I think, again, very few districts that have a stewardship plan that addresses, you know, the upkeep of our facilities. As Bridget alluded to earlier, we've made some reductions in these areas, pretty significant ones. That being said, we do have some projects that can't wait. And so yes, we've recognized some, what I'll say, rescheduling, they can't be forgotten. But for next year, given this uncertain period of time, we've lowered those out of the budget earlier. We made those reductions in the last go-round. But again, they're, they're not to go away. But Gary, are you on and can you comment about what we currently have?
I am. They're really, I think there is only one project left that would be considered a true capital project, and that is the roof replacement at Rick Marcott Central School. And the, getting back to the question, you know, we have already committed on, on using and dedicating the capital reserve to the projects that are still existing in our stewardship plan for FY '21.
Yeah, thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Bridget, can I?
Yeah, sure, I'm, absolutely.
Just, just one quick comment, Bridget, on the notion of an operating budget versus a capital budget. We don't really carry separate budgets within the school district. I think we've talked about this in the past, that there used to be a, a fund at the state level that would support up to, I think it ranged from 30 to 70% of capital projects, which has not been in existence for a long time. There's certainly discussion going on about the potential need with aging infrastructure throughout the state of reinvigorating that. And that, of course, is on the heels of the financial impact of this pandemic as well. So the way that Scott Burlington has done it is tried to incorporate some capital stewardship into each year's operating budget on a predictable basis. So you didn't see those, the big spikes you'd often see with projects that kind of hit at the same time. The challenge we have is that that's been pretty, a solid plan from a maintenance and preventative, maintenance and service standpoint, where we really had, started to have issues is with 50 and 60-year-old buildings, we're starting to see those projects pile up across the five facilities. So that's where you hear some of the bigger projects and some of the conversations about longer-term bonds and so forth. But more to come on that. But they aren't really distinct budgets and there isn't a capital reserve within the South Burlington budget to fund those, those peaks that are associated with large capital projects at this point.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Okay. And then Kristy Stern says, the NEA is already lobbying for senators and representatives to increase Vermont's taxes, especially given our education fund's shortfall. Is there a way we can support the board in preventing a tax increase on the state level from the NEA and the local level for South Burlington? Vermont is already one of the highest taxed states in the country. How can we stop the NEA from additional increases in our taxes?
Well, can I, can I speak to that as well? I think one of the things, one of the things this district would like to do is secure an operating budget for the upcoming year. And that would allow not only our, our staff to focus on continuity of education and then welcoming students back as soon as we're able to after the end of this school year, but I think the board would also like to expend some energy making sure that we have a chance to represent South Burlington as state decisions are made that will likely affect Ed funding going forward. I would say we've been pretty active as a board, generally speaking. And that's an area I know I would like to engage as well as a representative of South Burlington.
Any other board thoughts on that? Nope. Okay.
Sure, Bridget.
Yes.
Just one thought on that is I would suggest contact your state legislators. Sorry, Martin.
Okay. And then Annie Loop has her hand up. Steve, can you unmute her so she can ask a question? Hey, Annie? Annie, are you there?
Should be all set now.
Annie, can you unmute yourself?
Got myself unmuted, thank you.
Okay.
I'm certainly not saying that any teachers should be cut. I don't think that's at all necessary. But these days, many CEOs are giving up as much as 25% of their salary this year to ease the burdens of their employees. I feel that the administration and the teachers should seriously consider giving up perhaps only 6% of their proposed raises for this coming school year, along with other proposed cuts already suggested by the administration that would probably bring the budget down to a level funding from fiscal year 2020. I'm wondering why this is never, never seems to be discussed, the possibility of teachers and actually all personnel in the South Burlington School District consider just lopping off a little bit of the proposed raises that they will be getting if this budget goes through.
Yeah, I think I would just reiterate what we've said in previous meetings. All discussions of salary and benefits have to be done at the negotiating table. And that's not something that the board can just do. Second, I would, I would question the math on a slight decrease in everybody's proposed raises leading to a level-funded budget. That's, that's not the numbers that, that I've seen and that I understand. So I don't know if other board members have thoughts to add on that. But again, this is something that we have to discuss at the negotiating table. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think Annie's communicated her, her viewpoint on that. And I think there's people that are on the call that have heard that.
Yeah. Okay, I am seeing no other hands raised and no other questions.
Bridget, could I just ask, do we have to take action on the May 28 date?
We do not, Elizabeth. Again, I think it's just important to be transparent with the community about the May 7th date will, will now be pushed to a later date. And I'm suggesting that May 28th date. And obviously, when we move forward, we'll need to accept and approve the budget. And then we'll need to approve the warning. And the warning is what determines the date of the vote. And so, again, that's what I'm proposing. Obviously, we'd have to do, and Bridget said this early, we'd have to warn probably at the end of our April meeting or first part of the May to approve the budget and at the same time approve the warning. And the warning would contain the date for the vote. So no action needed on, on the special warning. And it sounds like board members related to the budget are not inclined to do that either at this time.
But we can communicate the same way that we've been communicating, May 7th was a target date. We can communicate, May 28th is now an updated target date.
That's correct.
Okay, I think then, as David has alluded to, item five is the special meeting warning. If we had approved a budget, we would be approving the meeting warning specifically for the budget date and the amount and all of that, but we don't need to do that. So we'll move on to agenda item number six, the consent agenda, which is a hire. So David, I'll let you take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Bridget. It's always hard to do, you know, any sort of new staff introduction, but obviously you've heard, and I think many of you know, that our teachers across the district are working hard to make these connections. And behind all good teachers and staff are also administrators supporting them. And with the moving on of Brent Coon for next year, a committee was, was formed or committees were formed to bring about a new principal. And I'm happy to have Pat Phillips, I believe I'm going to call on in just a second here. But Pat Phillips, for folks that don't know, he worked in our district for about 15 years as assistant principal at the high school. And I asked him to assist us in pulling together a committee and really working with the committee to look at what's the criteria, process, applicants, questions, parent information, opportunities, et cetera. And I think Pat's on with us this evening. And I'd love to, first of all, thank him. And I know he'll thank the, the committee and committees and parents of Rick Marcott that worked hard, I think, for a successful candidate for Rick Marcott. So Pat Phillips, are you on?
I am on, can you hear me?
Yes, Pat, good evening.
Good evening, nice to see you all, this way, anyway. Dave contacted me in December of last year and asked me to facilitate this search process. And I didn't realize it would be as interesting as it is, given the circumstances we've had. But we've made it through and I, and I feel very positive about the end result of this. We started in, in December, as I said, and post-meeting with David and Karen Danture, we then met with the faculty and staff at Rick Marcott to outline the process. And then we solicited volunteers to be members of a search committee. And eventually, in January, we had a search committee that was formed. And on that committee, Bridget was on that committee, and thank you for your help. And in addition, Mark Trifilio, principal of, of Orchard School, was on that committee. We also had faculty, support staff, a parent. And what that group actually worked on the month of January is defining the desired characteristics in a new school leader for Rick Marcott. Initially, the application pool seemed very small. I was pretty worried and it might've just been the time of the year or whatever. But eventually we reviewed approximately 20 applications. And in looking at those applications, we were looking for somebody who had experience as a principal, who was licensed and had experience with elementary schools. And so then we started to look very carefully through those applicants. And we sifted through after them going through that first gate of being those first three qualifications. And we decided as a committee to interview four applicants. And about that time, that was when coronavirus started to pop up. And we, you know, concerns came about and of the four, one of them withdrew. And so we were down to three candidates, but three good candidates, very good candidates. And we interviewed three of those folks in person, with the exception of one who was out of state. We used Zoom or Google Hangouts to do that. And then those three candidates, we were going to ask to come forward to be part of a community forum. And in that forum, they would have an opportunity to meet with parents and community members, with teachers and staff, with a small group of students and with district administrative team members. Again, things got more serious at that point with the coronavirus thing. And one of the candidates who was out of state pulled out. And so we were down to two candidates at that point, still two very good candidates. And at that point, we were gonna, I think we were going to go through that process on March 23rd. We were going to go through a community forum. Well, the governor then made the announcement that schools would be closed. And so we had to postpone for another week. And so I spent an awful lot of time setting up, I think, four or six different Zoom sessions for each of those different stakeholder groups. And then with several of those groups, I actually had to put Survey Monkey instruments together so that folks would have an opportunity to, very much just like this, in a webinar forum, listen to me ask these candidates questions that each of those groups had put forth based upon their own level of interest. At the end of the process, each of those candidates, too, the final two candidates, met with David. And we got, the search committee got feedback from each of the groups. And it was a unanimous decision on the part of the committee to forward the candidate, oh, I think you're going to meet this evening, is that correct?
Yes, she's on, I believe, tonight.
Oh, good, great. Kathleen's on. And I can tell you, each of the groups who were part of it, the, the parents group, the teachers and staff group, the district administrators, all really thought this was an outstanding candidate. And eventually, David asked me to do a, a reference check. I spoke to nine different former colleagues and current colleagues of Catherine Kilburn. And I can tell you, having done lots of searches over the years, I have never heard such unanimous approval and encouragement for this candidate. And, you know, having interviewed teachers and partaking in other search committees for administrative positions, this by far, and Bridget, you can feel free to speak to, this by far was, was amazing. I walked away from this thing being, you know, sort of frightened in the beginning about this whole search process and how disruptive it was. But at the end of this process, I think you have an absolutely outstanding candidate who has the approval of all those groups, albeit it wasn't the forum where people were able to meet the individual face-to-face, but it was like this. And this is as much as people that say, we didn't get to do a site visit. But like I said, I spoke with nine colleagues and, and current and former from two separate schools that just had glowing things to say about this person's leadership skills, this, this person's inspirational characteristics and this person's ability to confront problems that were existing and solve them in a manner where folks walked away, you know, feeling good about it, or at least feeling like they were heard. So I guess, you know, it was, this process turned out to be a whole, a lot longer than I thought it would be and take a lot more time. I thought I was retired and I felt like I had gone back to work full-time. But I can tell you, I am so excited. Found, as a group, we found an outstanding candidate.
Thank you, Pat. And, you know, Dave Young sometimes gets people saying it will only be a couple of meetings and sometimes it's a little bit longer. I never anticipated the COVID-19 issue hitting, but thank you again for your time. And I think Kathleen Kilburn, who I'm proposing here on the consent agenda, I think she's on. Kathleen, are you with us?
Yes, I am, good evening.
Yes, there she is, and we brought her in by video too. So Kathleen, welcome. Now you have all, you have to live up to all those positive words.
That was such a glowing introduction, I really appreciate that.
That was such a glowing introduction. I really appreciate that.
Yeah. So maybe just, just, just a little hello to the, to the board and folks that are on listening. A little bit about, about you and what you're looking forward to.
Sure. Board, board, we might want to identify ourselves real quick for Kathleen because I don't know which ones of the people who are on, are on the board. She knows me obviously from interviews, but if the rest, everyone wants to go around, Elizabeth, do you want to say?
Well, we're all identified on here. Hi Kathleen, I'm Elizabeth Fitzgerald. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
I'm Alex McHenry. I'm on the board and welcome.
Thanks, Alex. Glad to be here.
Brian and Martin look like they're on mute, but they're waving.
Brian Minier, hello. Nice to meet you, Kathleen.
Yes, welcome. Welcome, Kathleen.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
So you, you have a minute or two here, Kathleen, just to say hello. And yeah, that's.
Great. So I'm really delighted. I was very excited when Dave called with the good news that I was moving forward to the board. I've been in education for 2016 years, the first 15 as a elementary school teacher and a special educator, and the last 10 as an administrator. I'm also a mom, so I have a 19 year old daughter who just graduated last year from Bergen. And I have a adopted son who is differently abled, and he's 15. And so I raised two very different learners in a school system. So part of what continues to attract me and excite me about working at schools is I've had an opportunity to be on both sides of that table, to sit as sometimes as the consumer of service and problem solve and look at resources and think outside the box for what works individually for each student. And conversely, sometimes I'm the provider that has to have that same skill set and lens. So I just, I'm blessed. I'm, you know, not every adult I know is excited to get up and go to work in the morning, but I absolutely am. And I'm really pleased to be joining your community. I look forward to hearing from you about your priorities, your hopes, your dreams, the current challenges. And I just want to acknowledge I'm joining your community. And so I'm going to really need your help to know our starting point and our, our beginning perspectives. So I look forward to doing that this summer. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathleen. Back to you, Bridget.
Yeah, I just want to say a big, I just want to echo David saying a big thank you to Pat Phillips for, for herding cats and running a very complicated process. And, and Pat, you just did a spectacular job by all accounts. And everyone who I know who was involved in the process just has glowing things to say about how well you did. And thank you for just being able to act so quickly and adjust so quickly to new technology and new ways of doing things. And, and being able to make sure that we could get Kathleen. Because I, I think there was some concern from some folks that, given all the changes and the difference in the process, that maybe we should just put a pause. And I think we would have really missed out on, on someone who will add a lot of value to our school community if we had done that. So thank you for making all of that happen. I'm really appreciative of that.
Well, I just want to say thank you to all of you. I mean, you know, South Burlington's a wonderful place. And I know your work, you do yeoman's work as a board on, particularly in this difficult time. And so I want to thank you, David, for, for asking me to be part of this process. And I gave it my all. And I feel like we really found somebody who is really going to contribute in a tremendous way to South Burlington.
Yeah. And then just my perspective for the rest of the board, having sat on the, the committee and looked through applications and interviewed candidates. And this is really for you, Kathleen. I've, I've, I've interviewed lots of people in my previous career and I've been on a few search committees in the district. And I've never seen someone so prepared for a job and, and for the process as well. And having answers to our questions and, and having had experience in all the different things we asked her about. And so I'm just, I'm really delighted that the process has come to where it's come to. So I just want to say welcome to Kathleen, assuming everyone's okay with that. But, but I, I just want to give her my glowing recommendation as kind of the person from the board who was on that committee. So.
Thank you very much.
And as a parent, I should say. I think I said that when we were interviewing. For Rick Marcott as well. We're excited to, to have you on board for next year, given that it's going to be a pretty challenging year, I think, given everything we've gone through this year. So I think it will be great to have a strong leader who will be there even as you're learning to kind of fill that role. So thank you.
We will do it together. Yes, thank you.
So Bridget, this is a consent item. And so again, it's the pleasure of the board. I would also, again, contract for next year, obviously salary is, is not yet known. Because we don't, you don't have a contract for next year. So it's, I have done that work, but I would, I'm not sure about someone signing the contract. Whether Brian is able to do that, or whether the board through direction wants to direct me to sign on, on Brian's behalf or the board's behalf, that, that could be part of the, the recommendation.
Well, that's my question though. If it's a consent agenda item, do we need to then take action, like formal action on it since it's consent agenda?
You do not. I'm just saying that we're in a little bit of a different period to sign that particular contract. You, you would at least, someone could make a motion to, you know, to, to allow me, or again, I'm, I'm fine. And if someone, Brian, wants to pop in, we can float a folder out onto the sidewalk and he can sign and give it back or open my window or whatever.
I mean, if it's appealing, you can send it. I can sign it and I can scan it back. But I'm also happy to delegate. I don't care.
Perfect. No, that works. We can do that, Brian. I didn't know about your scanning, the scanning ability. That's perfect.
I have a 15 year old tech obsessed son. I'll be fine.
So just to, just to clarify, Bridget, process, it, on, on the consent agenda, we typically take the recommendation from the superintendent under policy governance. Is that correct?
Correct.
And, and that's obviously been predicated by the pretty detailed process that you've outlined here. And Pat Phillips, great to see you.
Nice to see you.
Go retire again.
I will.
But yeah, I'm, I'm impressed with the process and that it was able to continue under the conditions that were changing pretty quickly. And Kathleen speaks volumes that you've got this group of folks that you were able to, to screen through and, and participate in an alternate way of interviewing. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you. They made it very easy and welcoming. And lots, Pat did lots of communicating and checking in. It was extremely responsive with, if I had questions. So it went amazingly smooth and well, given all the possible barriers.
All right then. So I guess then it's sort of welcome, Kathleen. And.
Thank you.
And then is there any other, I know a couple of things that popped up at the end of meetings, the last couple of times, just given the format that we're in, we haven't been able to bring everything. Any last thoughts or questions before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Just one quick thing, one quick thing, Bridget. The, it is, does the board have any need or interest at this point of doing anything in addition to our normal board article in the other paper? That, that offer has been extended to us. I'm not sure if it's, you know, on a paid basis or not, but I do think we have quite a bit of information we're trying to get out on a variety of topics, including operations. So I just would throw that out and maybe we can discuss it at our next meeting. But I wonder if we shouldn't be considering ramping up some negoti, or some information apps to the community.
Well, and I feel like I'm often saying the same thing. I know our student reps aren't on tonight, but we've talked about having a student perspective before. I think that could be a way of sneaking that in. Obviously, there's a lot to update the public on, but if there were space, it sounds like the student reps would be interested.
Yeah, we, we had talked, Brian, you're right. We talked about a timeframe of that, which probably would be about right now because they've been doing online learning now for, David, what is it, over a month?
Yeah, a little over a month.
So why don't, I'll, I'll take the lead on that and get in touch with Delaney and Cole and see if we can't move something forward there.
Okay, great.
Bridget?
Yes.
One thing, we have, we have two questions from Christie Stern. And having read them, I think it, maybe we could just acknowledge that we received the question and not respond to it.
We did. Elizabeth, Elizabeth answered her questions. Yes, we spoke about those earlier in the meeting. I read them. I read the first one. I did not read the second one about the write-in campaign, but Elizabeth answered those questions, which I think were kind of together about the NEA and their lobbying at the state level. And Elizabeth made it clear that, that we're working to focus on our budget right now. And that we're doing our best at the state level and have in the past done our best at the state level to try to be thoughtful about what the state picture looks like for education funding and things that might help that situation. So I thought Elizabeth gave a pretty clear answer.
Yeah, okay.
I would just say, if, if there once, if there's a clear answer to that second question of can we help the board by starting a writing campaign? That's not helpful to the board, honestly. I think that the board can certainly write on its own to legislators and continue the activism that we've had in the past. I don't think that that would be helpful at this time personally, but maybe someone else has a different view.
Yeah, I think like past efforts, until we develop a board position and a recommendation, I, I think we, we always, our goal is obviously to get this operating budget passed and then concurrently and then subsequently focus efforts on supporting whatever changes may be coming on the state ed funding initiatives and, and giving some thought to how to, how to modify those if, if we collaborate as a board. So that would be the point in time where we might look for community support from that standpoint.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
And I can second that.
All in favor?
I, I.
You are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Kathleen. Thanks, Pat, for joining.
Welcome, Kathleen.